This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the City Council Regular Meeting for the City of Warrenville for June 6, 2022. Please be advised that this City Council meeting will be conducted in the traditional in-person format with the ability for the public to connect using the GoToMeeting access information you can find on our website. May I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Ashauer?
Here.
Alderman Berry?
Here.
Alderman Davalos?
Here.
Alderman Goodman?
Here.
Alderman Christel?
Here.
Alderman Kruckenberg?
Here.
Alderman Lockett?
Here.
And Alderman Widener?
Here.
Thank you, Julie. Would you please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, before we get down to business, we get to do something pleasant, which is to honor a couple of citizens that all of us appreciate and have appreciated for some time for their contributions to our community. This is the Parade Marshal Honor, which is a coveted honor, I think, in most communities because it is recognition of somebody who is very special to the community. We have an embarrassment of riches in Warrenville. We have so many good people that we'd like to honor. We're going to have two Parade Marshals this year, of two people who have contributed mightily to making Warrenville a better place. So I would invite them to join me at the podium right now. Ron, would you come up, please, and Dorothy? One on each side of work. I'm going to do this alphabetically. I couldn't figure out which one to read first, but we'll do it alphabetically, and then I can't get in trouble, okay? 2022 Parade Marshal Dorothy Dear. Whereas in response to a local newspaper ad, Dorothy Dear came and co-founded and led an environmental group called Warrenville &amp; Bloom. And whereas Dorothy loves to support environmental and sustainability causes that Warrenville &amp; Bloom promotes, including and encouraging the city and residents to create butterfly and pollinator gardens with an emphasis on planting native perennials. Dorothy has been instrumental in growing Warrenville &amp; Bloom to 35 volunteers, and together they have increased the curb appeal initiative throughout the city to recognize 250 yards every year for their gardening and landscaping. And whereas Dorothy's greatest accomplishment during 13 years of leading Warrenville &amp; Bloom's beautification initiatives was attained attaining the top 2019 American Bloom Award for Cities of Our Size. Remarkable. And whereas Dorothy was instrumental in establishing Join Hands Day that brought youth and adults together in volunteering across generations. And whereas Dorothy encourages people to get outside and enjoy and preserve nature and work to curb the destruction of natural resources and the environment. And whereas Dorothy's career in writing and photography focused her on walks through nature and gardens, which honed her skills in the production of stories and her volunteer roles, and her articles and books have encouraged others to adopt activities that take them into the natural world. And whereas Dorothy currently hopes to influence stores and manufacturers to curb the use of plastic to further prevent the destruction of the natural environment because she believes that people who spend time in the natural world live more enjoyable and healthier lives. Whereas Dorothy's passion and commitment to our living earth makes her an environmental hero, and it is with pride that we celebrate Dorothy Dear with this great honor. And I'll stop right there, Dorothy? Please. And finish up with the obligatory, "Now therefore, I, David O'Bremell, Mayor of the City of Warrenville, proclaim Dorothy Dear as Parade Marshal for the Independence Day Parade on July 3, 2022, and call upon all citizens to join in this festive celebration." Dorothy, this is for you. Would you like to say a few words? Absolutely. Come on up. Yeah, absolutely. Come on, green shirts.
And even the two that don't have green shirts.
Yeah, come on. That's fine. Come on up.
You're okay.
Okay, Dorothy.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much. When I was asked to be Grand Marshal, I had absolutely no idea it came with a proclamation. I have led an interesting life, but my time here in Warrenville has been very special, and I've really enjoyed my time leading Warrenville &amp; Bloom. I had no idea. I would stick with it so long, but I really enjoyed it, and I really appreciated the fact that in 2019, we did get that top award. But it's all of the volunteers. I mean, we do have a lot of volunteers, and we've learned how to work with the city and the Park District, the library and Historical Society and entities, and all of us have become better, I do believe, because of some of the inspiration that Warrenville &amp; Bloom has given. So thank you. Thank you very much for the recognition and the opportunity to raise the visibility of Warrenville &amp; Bloom again.
And the baskets, the baskets went up today?
Yes.
Just in time.
We have another person here with an enviable record of accomplishment for the City of Warrenville over a very long period of time. So it's with great pleasure that I read this proclamation for you, Ron. 2022 Parade Marshal Ron Mensah. Whereas Ron Mensah is the Community and Economic Development Director for the City of Warrenville, where he has worked for over 27 years. And whereas Ron led the city's efforts to redevelop the quarry into the world-class mixed-use Cantera Development, including work to attain the interchange at I-88 and Winfield Road. And whereas Ron was instrumental in guiding the acquisition, remediation, and redevelopment of the former Musselman Lumber Company into the 27-unit, single-family neighborhood of Stafford Place Subdivision. And whereas Ron was a key local team member for the design and development of the Warrenville Park District's Recreation Center, Hubble Middle School, the Warrenville Police Department Headquarters, Warrenville City Hall, and Public Works Facility, and the expansion of the Warrenville Public Library. Wow. Ron led the city's efforts to establish and administer the Old Town Civic Center and Southwest Route 59 Quarter Tax Increment Finance Districts, and was instrumental in the closure of Cantera and the Old Town Center TIFs. And whereas Ron led the city's efforts for the redesign of the Route 56 Expansion Project to be sensitive to local concerns and design expectations, which led to a grant that paid for much of the streetscape enhancements. And whereas Ron's leadership has been integral to the DuPage River flood mitigation and trail improvements through many developments and redevelopments, including the former Citgo property. And whereas Ron has worked with his wife Lisa to build their forever home and raising four great sons in Warrenville. And whereas former Mayor Vivian Lund has been a hero to Ron due to her grit, persistence, and hard work, are you listening, Vivian? Helped to lead the city's incorporation in 1967 and making the Cantera Development happen. And whereas Ron Mensah's passion for the future, the City of Warrenville deems him a hero in our eyes, and we celebrate Ron Mensah with this great honor. Now therefore, I, David O'Bremell, Mayor of the City of Warrenville, proclaim Ron Mensah as Parade Marshal for the Independence Day Parade on July 3, 2022, and call upon all citizens to join in this festive celebration. And I might add, this is an edited version of what Ron has accomplished. We tried to pick the most salient ones, but there probably would be five or six pages if we went through them all, so Ron can go. Just a couple. I really didn't have a speech prepared. I'm filled with gratitude. It's humbling to know that the people that are involved in this community felt that I was worthy of receiving this award, you might say. And a couple of years back, I did drive the mayor when he was the Parade Marshal in my blazer, and I can tell you, I enjoyed it so much. The perspective of seeing the community from the middle of the parade rather than watching the parade go by is wonderful. I'm looking forward to it. And with so much gratitude, I really appreciate the award. I'm really lucky to have had the opportunity to work in a community, make a difference in a community where the people really care about the community and support the staff and the people that do the work here every day. So professionally and personally, it's been a wonderful ride for me, and I can't tell you how much I really appreciate it.
I just wanted to say that the Fourth of July in 2019, we had, we were going to be booming and blooming. And so it was natural that we had Ron, because he helped with all our booming, and Dorothy with the booming. So it worked for this weird.
Superheroes.
Yeah.
I might. Yeah.
You can sit on top of your van.
Couldn't miss us up there. Can't wait for the parade. This is going to be fun. Okay, citizens' comments. We have two people who have signed up this evening, Colin Wilkie and Bob Seibert. Colin, would you like to come up first?
As you can see by the proclamations, there's a lot of superheroes in Warrenville. Just wanted to thank the entire council because you are superheroes to me. You have given us additional funding this year so we can do the fireworks. We have been working tirelessly to get people to pledge money, which has been pretty good. We're going to be selling masks, superhero masks, felt ones, not this type, but this type, for the entire parade route. So again, a town like Warrenville has lots of superheroes, but we also have Warrenvillians, too. So have a great night. Thank you.
Thank you, Colin. Bob?
Bob Seibert, Albright Court. What happens to our property taxes when the assessed valuation is doubled? Nothing. The property tax rate decreases by 50%. What happens when the assessed valuation is doubled in a TIF district? The TIF taxes are doubled. An example, on Ray Street, a Ray Street house that was built in the early 1930s. In TIF 2, from 1994 to 2008, it generated more than $10,000 of TIF funds. In 2013, the city put it into TIF 3. That will be till 2036. It now will create an additional $14,000 plus or minus. This is a total of $24,000 or more of TIF funds. No construction. No changes in the building, no construction, just paint. $24,000. When we look at Earhart's Development in TIF 3, we can identify new buildings, new construction, but most importantly, we identify new taxpayers who are paying the TIF tax on their homes. Ray Street does not have new taxpayers, has the same building, which will be almost 90 years old, taking this money. The important question is, tonight, who really pays this TIF tax on this 90-year-old house? This you should know. Are you pointing to the owner, as it is in Earhart's Division, or are you pointing to other people? You have to point to somebody because TIF tax money doesn't come off a tree. I'll give you a hint. You must follow the science.
Thank you, Bob. Were there any emails sent in today for this meeting? Okay, and no one is on the line that I could see for citizens' comments, so we'll conclude the comments at this point. From citizens and move on to official and staff comments, beginning with the mayor. Just one thing, I'll remind you that we're having our inaugural, the very first multicultural festival this coming weekend on the 11th. It should be a lot of fun. It's something we have not done before. We've wanted to do something like this for a long time. It's finally come together. Information can be found in the newsletter, Hometown Happenings. There's information in there for you, or you can go to the Park District website and get the details. But food trucks, all kinds of good stuff for kids. It's going to be a lot of fun. So take the time to come out and mix with your neighbors and enjoy our diversity. Next Saturday, June 11th, right here across the street from City Hall, by the way. Okay, that's all I have this evening. Clerk? Okay, Alderman? Alderman Goodman?
Yes. One more detail on that. It's from 12 to 5, the multicultural fest.
Okay, good.
Also, wanted to remind everybody that our library's Wonderful Concerts on the Commons begins this week. The first concert will be this Thursday, right here between City Hall and the library at 7 o'clock, and they're beginning with a band called the Barefoot Hawaiian. I believe there will be fire twirling involved, so come on out. And my last item, I just want to wish everybody a happy Pride. I'm sure everybody here would agree with me that in our city, all are welcome, and we want to celebrate and appreciate everyone, as we hope to do at the multicultural festival this weekend.
Excellent. Well said. Thank you. Okay, and I'd like to thank Alderman Berry for holding down the fort while I was out of town, visiting my daughter, and Alderman Lockett for doing the Memorial Day Ceremony. I heard through my spies that you did very well. So I thank you both. Anyone else? All right. We'll move on then to the city administrator. John, good evening.
Good evening. I have nothing else to report tonight. Thank you.
Okay, and C, Attorney? Brook? Okay, very good. We'll move on to the agenda for this evening then. Alderman Widener, would you like to make the motion?
Yes, thank you. I move to approve the agenda for the June 6, 2022 City Council Regular Meeting.
Second. Second by Alderman Davalos. Any discussion or changes to the agenda for this evening? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No opposed. Motion carries. The agenda is approved as presented. We have a couple sets of minutes that approve also. Alderman Widener, would you like to make that motion also?
Yes, thank you. I move to approve the minutes of the May 16, 2022 City Council Regular Meeting and to approve the minutes of the May 23, 2022 Public Safety and Finance Committee Meeting.
Second. Second again by Alderman Davalos. Any discussion of those minutes? Again, seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and the minutes are approved. The consent agenda for this evening. Item 6A, accept Public Safety and Finance Committee recommendation and passed resolution R2022-26, approving a non-exclusive parking and access license agreement for the city-owned property located at 28W244 Warrenville Road. B, accept Public Safety and Finance Committee recommendation and passed resolution R2022-27, approving the purchase of one 2022 Ford Utility Police Interceptor, AWD Explorer, through State of Illinois Contract Number 204 to replace Squad 205, and authorize the purchase and installation of replacement equipment in the total amount of $47,196.67. C, accept Public Safety and Finance Committee recommendation and passed resolution R2022-28, approving the purchase of three 2022 Ford Utility Police Interceptor, AWD Explorer vehicles, through the State of Illinois Contract Number 204 to replace Squads 211, 213, 221, in the amount of $104,050. D, accepts staff recommendation and passed resolution R2022-29, approving the renewal agreement for city prosecutor services with Attorney Christian Charakowitz for a period of June 1, 2022 through May 31, 2023. E, accept staff recommendation and passed resolution R2022-30, approving an agreement with AT&amp;T Corporation for use of the parking lot at 28W615 Ferry Road for the July 3 to the 4, 2022 Independence Day Celebration. F, accept staff recommendation and passed resolution R222-31, approving the amended local agency agreement for federal participation in the Trailhead Project, which involves the cost sharing of $816,78.59 in federal funds, and, 816,000 that was, $272,023.86 in local funds for the construction and construction engineering costs. G, accept Public Safety and Finance Committee recommendation authorize the closure of certain local streets for the annual Independence Day Parade staging and Cerny Park Festival as requested by the Warrenville Friends of the Fourth Committee. H, accept Public Safety and Finance Committee recommendation and approve the IDEC recommendation to acknowledge certain holidays and observances in June, July, and August of 2022. I, receive and file minutes of the Environmental Advisory Commission meeting held on April 19, 2022. J, receive and file minutes of the Plan Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals meeting held on May 19, 2022. K, receive and file reports of invoices paid up to June 1, 2022 in the amount of $86,694.24. And L, authorize expenditures for invoices due on or before June 20, 2022 in the amount of $668,148.66. Mayor, Alderman Widener? I've been gone a while. It's messed up in my head.
Motion to approve the agenda as presented by Mayor David.
Thank you.
Second.
Second by Alderman Goodman. They have a roll call, please?
Alderman Lockett?
Aye.
Alderman Christel?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Kruckenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
And Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries, and the consent agenda is approved. Just one final comment on item F. I'd just like to note the disparity in the numbers there. We found outside resources for over $800,000 of this project, and we only have to put in less than $300,000 ourselves. This is typical of what our talented and hard-working staff does for us. They find money to use for our projects so we don't have to use tax money. That's a pretty good ratio, almost three to one. So congratulations to the staff again. This is typical. This is what they do every day. So thank you so much. Regular agenda. We have one item. We'd like to make this motion. Alderman Goodman?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the Long Range Financial Planning Work Group recommendation and pass resolution R2022-32, approving a letter of engagement with Chapman and Cutler LLP to serve as the city's bond counsel.
Second. Motion and a second. Discussion. Alderman Goodman?
Yes. Alderman Davalos and I sit with staff on the Long Range Financial Planning Work Group, and we went through a very interesting interview process after narrowing down bond counsel to a manageable number of interviews. And I think we learned a lot about the situation and of the applicants that put forward proposals. Chapman and Cutler seemed the most easy to work with, well-qualified, comfortable in the area, very knowledgeable about having performed similar work for many nearby communities and communities of similar sizes and with projects like ours. Ours may be a little unique in some ways. We, for instance, don't have a lot of experience with public finance because our community has been so financially strong for so long that we haven't had to have publicly bonded debt against the general fund. So they will have to take on a slightly higher burden of bringing us up to speed and helping us learn what questions to ask about this new situation for us. But hopefully, with their help, we will be able to successfully obtain financing and get our water tower built.
Excellent. Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Davalos, did you wish to add anything?
Yeah, I would just add to that just a little bit. I was pedaling as fast as I could because I came on just when we were doing this. So I came into the process thinking, gosh, I wonder if this is really what we have to do, because we talk about not having bonded debt so much that I don't even think about it. And it was a wonderful learning process, not just from the councils that we interviewed, but from the staff. And they had met with other people before I came onto this committee, and a lot of that information was shared. And so I was quite pleased to be part of this process, and I learned a lot. The firm that we are picking, they have some of their attorneys and people that actually live here in DuPage that seemed much more willing to come actually to visit us, to come to the council meeting if necessary. They were very, very, well, both of the firms were very experienced in what they do. But I just had more of a feeling that if we had questions and we actually wanted to see their faces and that sort of thing, that they would be here. So I think it was, well, it was a unanimous decision, and we were fortunate to have two quality firms to be able to choose from. So I thought that was great. Thanks.
That's been my experience around everywhere. We get quality folks to want to work in Warrenville, which says a lot for the community. Thank you. Anyone else with comments, questions? Okay, we have a roll call then, please?
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Lockett?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Christel?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
And Alderman Kruckenberg?
Aye.
Motion carries. I believe we have concluded our business for the evening. We have nothing under unfinished business, nothing listed for new business, no need for a closed under unfinished business, nothing listed for new business, no need for a closed session. Last chance, John. Okay, we're good. Motion adjourned, please. Who would like to do it? Alderman Kruckenberg?
I move re-adjourn.
Second.
You snooze, you lose, Alderman. All in favor? Opposed? We adjourn. Thank you for your attendance this evening.
This conference is no longer being recorded.
Seriously, where do you have a nicer meeting than when you come to Warrenville? We get stuff done. We behave ourselves.